Okay, on to our routine matters. We have approval of minutes from the open session and executive session. I did, I think I did call to order, and then I went to executive session. We've come out of executive session, and we're going into routine matters. First is approval of minutes, open session, the executive session of November 1st, 2021.
No move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All's against? Right, motion passes. Um, moving on, communications and commendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a number of communications and commendations. I'm gonna ask Assistant Superintendent Ms. Miller to walk you through them all.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Lee and Chairman Devon. A number of commendations to go through tonight. So it's always an honor to be celebrating all the positivity that's been happening within our school walls. So I start with letting you know that we had a Cradles to Crayons donation given to the school district this year, where the foundation had donated just over 400 winter coats, hats, gloves, and mittens to the Branch of Public Schools that have all now since been distributed to Braintree students in needs. So we thank them obviously for their donation, and obviously that will go a long way as we enter into our winter months.
Here.
Um, next, we are talking about the Braintree Rotary Club. So for the 14th year, which is pretty amazing, just here 14 years, uh, the Braintree Rotary Club has been donating dictionaries to all of our Grade 3 students and thesauruses to all of our Grade 5 students. Those are actually dictionaries and thesauruses that the students get to take home and they're theirs to keep for their educational careers. Um, so again, it was the 14th year that this was happening. What you're seeing up on your screen is actually a picture of our former superintendent, Dr. Peter Kersberg, who is part of the Braintree Rotary Club. He had put together a video for last year as well as this year, just with COVID, instead of coming into the schools and presenting them himself. But all of the students in 3rd grade and 5th grade got to watch this five or six minute video where Dr. Kersberg is talking about the great things that the Rotary Club is all about, how they're active in the community, how they're active in the nation, and actually with some international fund, uh, fundraisers as well. And then, uh, the teachers were all handing out the dictionaries and thesauruses. So we certainly thank the Braintree Rotary Club for always supporting everything that we're doing and having this special token of appreciation that the students are actually using in their classes. Next, we have a commendation from the music department. So we had a number of students at Braintree High School who, um, who were auditioning for the National Association for Music Educators Southeastern District Festival. So we were very excited that these auditions back into play. And out of those auditions, we had a number of students who were accepted into the festival and will be performing in March as part of this. So it's a great honor for these students to have been accepted into the festival. We had Sean Dickerson, who plays the viola in our orchestra. Christopher Erler, who is a bass in our mixed chorus. Diksha Kavalapara, who is a soprano in our mixed chorus. Steel Lucky, who is a tenor in our mixed chorus. And Raul Prasad, who plays the bassoon in our band and has also been recommended for all states. So we congratulate them and we look forward to hearing about their performance in March.
Excellent.
Uh, we also wanted to mention Braintree CPAC. So CPAC stands for the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I wanted to just publicly let everybody know that any student who, any family who has a student on an individualized education plan will actually be getting a memo from the CPAC coming out in the next week or two, just with information about what the CPAC is all about, how they can get in contact or be involved with the CPAC if they ever had any questions and feel like they needed support from this outside parent group. Um, again, that flyer will be going out. But then for anybody who is interested to learn more, we do have a section of our braintreeschools.org website specifically dedicated for the CPAC. And they also have a Gmail account, again, in case there were any questions that any of our families in the Braintree Public Schools had questions about special education. So we thank them for putting together that information. Finally, in terms of commendations, um, we have an art commendation. A special recognition goes to one of our teachers at Braintree High School, Abby Young, for her portrait of a veteran project. And I actually wanted to take a moment to read just two paragraphs from our Director of Art and Music, I'm sorry, Director of Art and Design, Ms. Heidi Hurley, who wanted to recognize an amazing accomplishment by the art teacher, Abby Young at Braintree High School. Abby has been teaching at Braintree High School for the past three years, and everything she has done with her students has been crafted with compassion, care, and community. Specifically, these past three months, Ms. Young has taught lessons for all of her classes. So, uh, she teaches Fine Arts 1, 2, and 3, and also some AP courses, where each student would create a portrait of a veteran. The students were instructed to interview a veteran and create a portrait of that person in a creative way that may have inspired them from the interview. The students did an amazing job. The artwork from all the levels, from all levels of skill and ability are crafted and created with pride. And all of the work is currently on display in the upper lobby in the art wing of Braintree High School and will be up for the next couple of weeks. Um, this was very special to Ms. Hurley as well, who, as you all know, will be with us for, I think she's down to 25 school days before retirement for her very long and accomplished career in Braintree. Um, but specifically what Abby Young had done was she kept the secret from Ms. Hurley. And so every time Ms. Hurley was going to visit her classroom or observe, they would actually hide all of the artwork that was happening until it was completed. And so what you have up on your screen here is a picture of, um, one student in particular who had done a portrait of Ms. Hurley herself, who is a veteran of the Marines. And so she was very touched when she actually saw the entire project come to completion. And of course, a project that she didn't know was happening. So we thank Ms. Young for obviously being creative with her students and, um, and celebrating all the great things that we have going on in our community. I will finally mention that, um, for all the school community members in your packet, you have the approved policy and ed and finance and operations minutes for information.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Okay, I do, uh, one comment though. I will say one thing, CPAC, if you do have a child that's on an IEP, I had a child that was on IEP, and I gotta tell you, CPAC was a saving grace. They will help you and they know what it's all about. I mean, um, they know the highs, they know the lows. They're willing to, you know, shall we say, hold your hand and get you through it, which was what they did to me, so I'll always be indebted to that group. Uh, moving on to gifts to schools. See what we have here. We have our first, which is Bay State Textiles Gifts to Schools totaling $125.75. There are four checks that totaled $125.75. What say the committee? All right, all those in favor for accepting, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay. Second, Braintree Women's Club, gift, gifts to the school, um, totaling $350. One check in the amount of $350 from the Braintree Women's Club to be used in a supportive education and raising awareness around the domestic violence by Bashy and the SAD Club. What say the committee?
No move.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, those will be graciously accepted. Thank you very much. Um, Ashley's a wonderful group. They just had a meeting the other night, I believe. Had more than a few people ask me about that. Uh, wonderful group, thank you. Moving on to trip approvals.
Uh, and again, I'm gonna ask Ms. Miller to present one of the trips, and then we have a late addition I'd like to talk about shortly after that.
Great, thank you. Uh, so the first trip that we wanted to talk about tonight was a trip to the Aditash Mountain. So this is for Braintree High School, taking, um, students who are interested on an overnight ski trip. It is a trip that has happened for a number of years now. The specifics are that students would be leaving Braintree High School at 1:15 in the afternoon on Friday, January 28th. So that would be right at the beginning of the last period of class. Um, and then they would be returning by 8:00 PM on Saturday, January 29th. The ratio of chaperone to students would be one chaperone per 10 students is what they would strive for. We currently have three chaperones already committed to the trip. We have, uh, Dr. Mary Ford Clark, who is our school psychologist. She is the one running the trip. We also have Nancy Moynihan and Andy Delary, two assistant principals at the high school. And then depending on how many students were interested, if the trip were approved, it would certainly add more chaperones to get to that 1 to 10 ratio. Um, they do need a minimum of 40 students in order to go. Students would attend a mandatory meeting going over all of the rules and expectations. And so they are looking for your approval to take that trip.
Okay, what say the committee?
No move.
Second.
Okay, any comment, discussion? Okay, uh, I will say one thing, we've been having ski, ski trips since, skis were wood, real wood. So, and I, I remember them being a good time. I remember going, well, there are a few times, learning myself, so. Uh, with that being said, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, motion passes.
Uh, there, there, Mr. Chairman, there is another trip that I'd like to present tonight. In fact, I just passed out some papers while you were in executive session. Uh, this, this came, uh, to us a little bit late, but the trip is scheduled for early February. I have checked with Dr. Scully, he's in full support of this trip. Uh, this is the dance team, uh, and the dance team would like to, again, because in 2019, they made a very similar trip, to travel down to Orlando, Florida to be part of a national competition. Uh, I believe we have some members of the dance team that are here who can obviously answer any questions. Um, but they are asking for our support and allowing for this trip, which would run from February 4th of 2022 to February 6th of 2022. Travel dates identified in the materials I gave you.
Okay, any comments or questions?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, okay, anyone want to say, okay. I was just gonna say, yeah, we know that the dance team has been one of more, one of our more successful athletic endeavors. The school, very well supported, very disciplined. I watched them, I was up in the, uh, in the library watching them working out. It's a very tight group, they put a lot of time into it, and I can't help but think that they, they show the best of who we are. So with that, I'll, you've made the motion, mister?
Yes.
Okay. A second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much, good luck. We look forward to you being very successful.
You don't have to hang around if you don't want to.
Yeah, it's like, run, save yourselves. Do this.
And they're supposed to be here, but they are at the awards banquet at.
No worries at all, they're, they represent and precedes them. Thank you very much. Thank you, good seeing you. Okay. Moving on, from the superintendent and staff.
Uh, so within your packets, you will find a nurse's appointment. As you all know by now, uh, this is a hire that falls under your purview. Uh, this position is that of Emily Leary, who would be a replacement preschool nurse. Uh, we're looking for your approval for this position.
And looking, looking over her, um, she does have an extensive, uh, resume. Obviously.
Highly recommended by our Director of Nursing. Uh, we're actually looking forward to working more with her.
Excellent, any comments or questions from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
No move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, motion passes. Uh, it'd be wonderful seeing her and hope she'll, obviously she'll be a great addition to what I believe is one of the greater groups we have. Our nurses have really, really.
Extended themselves immensely all year long.
Yes.
To do so.
Yes, they do. Thank you. All right, moving on.
The next item we have to present, uh, and we have a special guest, Karen Driscoll, who's gonna join us tonight. Uh, this is around the Sandy Hook Promise tip line. Uh, this is work that, uh, and Karen can explain, uh, better than I can, what all the work that's gone into getting it to this place in time. Uh, but obviously, uh, we have worked directly with Karen and Carla Saros, who unfortunately can't be here tonight, and the police department. But I'd like Karen to come up and just walk through the slides as an explanation of what we're proposing here tonight.
Wonderful to see you. Have the floor.
Great, excellent. Um, I'd like to mention my name is Karen Driscoll, I'm a parent here in Braintree. Um, the Braintree School Safety Advocacy Group, I mean, uh, we started that right after the Brooklyn Florida school shooting. We gathered with the parents together, uh, we wanted to do some research, come up with some common sense ideas that we could talk about this in this town, try to prevent a school shooting. Um, since then, we've become a very robust group. We have representation now from school administration, teachers, school psychologists, nurses, the Braintree Police, Braintree Fire, et cetera, et cetera. It's about 30 of us now on that core committee, in addition to a whole bunch of parents. Um, so our research over the years has concluded that preventing a school shooting involves five areas: security, education, communication, mental health, gun safety, and social inclusion. I'm here tonight to talk to you specifically about the education communication piece of this. If you could switch this line, thanks, Jim. Um, specifically, a program that we discovered called the Sandy Hook Promise Say Something Anonymous Reporting System. That is a really long way of saying that this is an anonymous tip line that has been set up by this group. Um, the best part of it is that it is free. Uh, they set up for grades 6 through 12. Um, it's a very well-run organization. Um, and there's a video here, uh, we'll run about, maybe about two minutes of it, Jim, I'll give you the assignment.
Okay.
A little overview of this, kind of how it started, what it's about, and then we'll kind of explain how it works afterwards.
And we have sound. Good, sir? Nope, we got it in that.
Yes.
Get out of your computer, Jim.
I, I get sound.
Yeah, maybe I should. Play it through here.
What you need with that, that is important to hear.
That's okay, so, so the Sandy Hook Promise was organized by the families of Sandy Hook School Club, um, children, and children. They wanted to come up with, um, a way to prevent such a tragedy in other school systems. So they developed this program, uh, to train students, um, how to recognize signs of trouble and, um, how important it is to report these signs. And it also provides a way for them to do it in an anonymous way, which is important. Since kids are often afraid of, they have fear of persecution, ostracization, whatever the issue is. A lot of kids feel nervous about saying something. So an anonymous tip line allows kids to feel comfortable with that. Um, um, research has shown that 80% of school shooters tell someone they're gonna do it before they do it. And so it's very important for us to capture this critical information before the tragedy, not after. I'm showing you thought, listening to school reports come out about Oxford High School, um, Michigan, that there's a good chance that they could have prevented this tragedy if such an anonymous tip line was in place. There was a lot of shouting and chatter about this situation before it happened. Unfortunately, it didn't make it to the final trial. We want this, you know, those two things, and allows there to be a pool of information so that something can be done ahead of a tragedy. Um, we have, um, consented this to the police department, and we have seen depth of support from them, which is fantastic. Um, I'm quickly walking through how the program works. So, um, and then I can kind of answer it afterwards. Um, so how this works is that, um, if the school just forms a sign of Sandy Hook Promise, um, they would, um, set it up with a training. And the training, in the past, the training was, um, in person. Um, but since COVID, they've made it to be very concise. It's actually a 20-ish minute video that's, um, given to the kids, um, at some point during the school year. Uh, what it does is teach kids what sorts of things should they be looking for, explaining how important it is for them to report, and giving them options on how to report. They can call 911, they can tell a trusted adult, or they can use the, um, anonymous reporting system that they would show them how to download an app for, or they can go to the website, or they can call. Um, once, uh, if a student uses the fraud system, the tip is immediately processed by a crisis center, um, Sandy Hook Promise Crisis Center that operates 24/7. Um, and then, um, they, they vet this, they, they triage it, and then they contact Braintree, um, the school administration about a specific tip. If it's a life safety tip, um, somebody's admitted, then, um, Braintree Police Dispatch gets, gets called at the same time. If it's a non-life safety, uh, tip, then it only can be handled by the school administration or the school, depending on the type of tip. This is a slide showing the crisis center, um, looks like in, uh, Florida. It's a group of highly trained social workers who, um, have been trained in how to take in these tips, how to vet out the pranks, and then, um, get as much information from the tipster in a very short period of time, where no one else has a shorter, you can spend, sometimes, you can switch slides, yeah. Um, and then once the, um, so they, they vet it, they triage it, they categorize it, um, deliver it to the administration or the police or both. Um, and then if they work with the town, if there's any sort of help that's required from these experts, they're happy to work with you at, to whatever point in the process you put them. Um, within the, within the school system, there will be various teams set up. There will be a district level team, um, 35 administrators. Um, this group receives life tapes, life safety tips, fully. Um, there are school teams at each school, this is grades 6 through 12, so it would just be the two middle schools and the high school. There would be teams set up at the schools that will receive both life safety and non-life safety tips so that they can, um, vet those and kind of deal with those accordingly. And then 911 dispatch would only be saved for life safety. Uh, once the system's in place, um, there's an option to set up Save Promise Clubs at the various schools. These are student-led organizations that help kind of keep information flowing, um, keep the kids talking about this and keeping them involved and understanding how important this is in their community, for them to be our first line of defense, provide lots of leadership opportunities for kids. Um, school, well, in other school systems, and they tend to kind of take it and run with it, and then this is kind of work. So you would train, you would bring it in, you would train all the kids all at once, and then every year you kind of give over pressure training. Again, it's a 20-minute video, not a big time commitment from the school day. Let's see, what is their impact been like so far? So they trained over 12 million people and 14,000 schools so far. We've had 60,000 anonymous tips that they've received. They've had, they've helped 2,100 students solve natural health crises, and they have had, um, 250,000 lives saved. So in a, in a few short years, this, this has had a big impact on, on schools. Um, so shootings are statistically rare, fortunately teenage suicide is not. And this is an area that Saros has proven to be especially helpful in. That tends to be the thing that, that is really important that they deal with a lot. And, um, so this would be an amazing resource for trying to prevent those sorts of things in our community. Um, we can move on to questions, um, but I'll answer a comment question right away. I think the first thing a lot of people think of is, are there a lot of pranks that get called in or, or texted in that they have or whatever? And they say they do get some, they're really good at vetting them. Um, they tend to be kind of in the beginning when you first implement the program, then they kind of peter out. So they know how to deal with that. There's also questions about like, what type of volume are you dealing with? This is gonna be overwhelming for the school, the administration, or the schools, or the police. In the beginning, they say they get a, a good-sized volume, nothing that isn't, isn't able to be handled, but again, it does kind of peter out over time. Um, the kids kind of get used to it, and like anything new, they wanna try it out, right? So, um, that's the program. Um, it is free, it's not something that requires an investment by the school administration at all, uh, which is fantastic. Um, if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Comments or questions from the school committee? Jen, Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, the policy subcommittee was lucky enough to have a preview of this presentation, thanks to Carla, and we passed it on to the school committee with our full endorsement. Um, I think this is a fabulous program. I'm so thrilled that we're doing it. It's so important, the work that you guys have done, so we're very appreciative. I'm sure I speak for the group in saying, thank you for everything that you have done to help bring this and other initiatives to fruition. Um, so I think this is a great addition to the school system. I'm thrilled that we're going to have this tool in our toolkit, and, um, I'm looking forward to it.
Any other comments, questions? I have a few. Uh, well, first of all, I, I was in the, uh, uh, policy subcommittee, and I heard there was a nominal cost of about $4,000, which you look at and say, $4,000? I mean, come on, I, I don't think this, we could have a big sale and, and raise that. This is too important, the fact that the, we're dealing with professionals that are gonna come train our people, and I'm willing to bet there's some integration there, in that getting the information to the people who need it as fast as possible. We're hearing about too many tragedies across this country where it's like, God, if we could have done something. Um, this is kind of like one of those times, um, I remember just being there, and, and I'm disappointed in a couple of things. One, Carla wasn't here, because I know that both you and her have put quite a bit of time in. I mean, over a year, um, a lot of time, a lot of research. The book tells me it's gotten thicker, okay? I, I would, I would think as much. Uh, but you look and say, okay, if, this is not just for the safety of our students. This is for the safety of our teachers too. Because it's, I mean, we've lost teachers across this nation to this type of, uh, violence. And I, I just see this as another tool whereby we render our schools safer and more secure. So thank you very much for your work. This is, um, a, a no-brainer to me. What action do you need from us tonight?
I think it'd be important if the committee could approve it through a vote. Uh, we have met, um, you know, with, yeah, and Carla, with, uh, the Chief of Police and, and members of his staff, they are in full support. We have spoken to a number of other school systems in the state that have utilized this, and they have spoken very highly about it. Uh, but in terms of us using it as a school district, I do think it's important that we get there in promote order of that school committee.
Okay, so our vote is one of approval.
And, and. I'll, I'll make that motion.
The motion?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of support of this wonderful group, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Didn't think so. Uh, it passes. Thank you very much for your work. We look forward to you coming before us. Uh, we know that a new school committee is gonna be seated pretty soon, so another group will come in. This is one of those easy ones that'll help them too. Yeah, thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to ECF funding.
And Mr. Brace, we're gonna bring him up.
John, you're in. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
Give me a second, John, let me just get your slides up.
I had to make promises to make this quick, so.
All right, I'll do one thing, I mean, there's one thing on the school committee. Uh, we do have two elects with us. We have Kathy Tuffy and Lisa Higa that are within the audience here, want to recognize you. Couple of weeks you're in, you know, put on your helmets, yeah, shoulder pads, come on in. It's, uh, the water's fine. Just wanted to recognize first. Thank you.
My name is John Grace, I'm the Senior Knowledge Manager for Braintree Schools. Uh, this is about the Emergency Connectivity Fund at ECF. So, um, we applied for this in July when we found out about it. It's basically, uh, to help families and school districts that were struggling with remote learning and everything else, and that includes all of our losses that we had during rural learning. So, um, basically, uh, we put in progressive approval. All right, it's a $7.17 billion program. You know, if it's just with the remote learning, then we, uh, they cover the cost of the $400 Chromebooks. Most of our Chromebooks cost less than $40. Basically, it's free. Uh, and then, our laptops are usually about $750, so they cover up $200. It also covers $250 for Wi-Fi hotspots and other things, so internet service plans, the device, everything. So in, um, July, we put in for 2,000 Chromebooks, 50 laptops, 50 Wi-Fi hotspots. And then, um, we also requested the investment, Belle was fantastic in helping. Belle was fantastic in helping us solve our families during COVID, they gave us reduced or even freedom in the net for some of the families that didn't have internet at home. So this would help to go and, um, repay them for some of their losses that came from that COVID force. Um, our expected approval was originally in the beginning of September, um, we had everything queued up, basically we had to buy everything first, and then, once we got the reimbursement, we submitted all of our information, and we received the equipment, all the inventories, we would get reimbursed for that. So, um, we had everything queued up, so we knew as soon as we got approval, and we finally received it, uh, on September 28th, I believe it was. So, uh, we requested, uh, $682,254, and we got all been approved. So we, excellent, uh, Chromebooks and laptops were about $714,000, KJ, which is what did our Wi-Fi hotspots during the pandemic, about $35,000, they're almost $36,000, and then Dolly requested about $30,000. Yeah, so right now, we actually received all 2,000 Chromebooks, they are parked into the DHS auto body, the auto body shop right now in Palates, and then we filled up our tech offices with all the ones that could open up. Um, that number, the 77 students were identified as needing a device, like the family had no device that they could do any schoolwork or anything on at home, so those families were identified, their principals, uh, they have them, that number's actually of course at 90, which is why a lot of those additions just started today. Um, and then, all these staff members were identified as needing them for, you know, pairs or one-on-one work and remote work, if they didn't have a device at home. And we have approximately 200 devices for programs, uh, that we're going to put out, um, including, not including the MGS, we set aside a bunch for MGS, and we're going to use those. We still have about a thousand that we're, we're looking to give out. It's a unique problem for us, usually we don't have enough devices to give out, and now we have almost 20, you know. The good, the good thing about this is usually a Chromebook especially, it's only good for about five and a half years. Google has extended that, anything in July in, um, year 2020 is now we're good for eight years. So these are actually lasted so long that they're going to come. Uh, we've seen the delivery, we've got 30,000 laptops the next day, uh, we didn't get all 50, just because of, uh, the pricing, we put in a proposal guide now. Um, also, they were back with it for a long time too, so we weren't actually expecting those yet. Um, those are going to replace some of the older HP laptops, especially some of the stuff like Nurse bought, um, Kristen Wu and him have bought some, some of them are a little older, so we're going to replace those with them. Um, we're going to just quote from KJ, that's the, hotspots are going up this week, we didn't need all 20, we expected five more families that needed them, we didn't, so we only have six, and actually, to go back just in case they are identified at a later point. The nice thing about the funding is that whatever we don't spend, we just didn't spend it, so we just don't get reimbursed for it, so it's not like we're wasting money or anything that we do have. So, um, we're going to build now, I'm getting a list of all the families out to see if they're in that, and during COVID, and then, um, we only had 60 days to inventory all the stuff since it came into November 4th, so the tax bill marching, pretty much around the clock, uh, hours every single day trying to get these out to families in place where they can come. Um, I have to have that report back to the state by January 4th, so that's what my Christmas break is only being, big shout out, you know. Russell Lee, he isn't doggone asked, so. That's, um, that's what it is, this song that was actually really positive for us in the, kind of, few years ago, I can send it to you, so, share that with the board.
Well, and I wouldn't want to shortchange the effort that was involved in getting this all done, uh, and continues today as they have received the devices and the equipment and now have to deploy it all. Uh, 2,000 of anything doesn't just walk out the door quickly, uh, and so John and his staff have really done a tremendous amount of work that is to put us in this position and to ensure that all of our students have what they need from a technology standpoint to be able to be successful at school, so I thank him and his staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Other than, what are we going to do now that Belle's out of the internet business?
We're going to be needing that next week.
John, I know your group has, uh, been asked to do quite a bit over the last, you know, 18 months, you know, if it isn't, you know, trying to do the impossible in older buildings that are made out of concrete and, and reba, which is an antenna problem onto itself, and some of the other hardware problems and, you know, eh, eh, the, some of the issues we had electrically up at the high school and things like that, and, and your group, and we know that you change players all the time, there are people leaving and people coming on, um, I think you guys have done an exemplary job as far as what we've asked of you to do, which is impossible, we have asked the impossible, and you guys continue to surprise me, and it's like, wow, they did that? How'd they do that? Okay, um, great group, thank the guys, obviously anyone in the office, thank you very much for your time, it's greatly appreciated.
What happens when you bring money in?
I tell you what, yeah, well.
Very few questions.
Moving on to, where are we? Uh, kids' acknowledgement, yes, winter coach.
So within your packet, uh, is a, a listing of all our winter coaches for the, the winter season, uh, which has gone in earnest since Thanksgiving has passed us by. Uh, as is typical, we, we bring it before you for your approval, uh, so that we can have successful winter seasons, our student athletes.
Any comments or questions from the school committee? Anyone?
I got a question then.
By all means.
Athletic department facilities manager. What exactly is a facilities manager? Wouldn't that fall into it?
It's actually, it's actually a faculty manager, uh, and, uh, that individual goes to games where the athletic director is already at another game, to make sure that we have appropriate supervision for our fans, uh, and for the contest itself. Uh, so it is, uh, something we've had in the athletic budget over time, particularly during the winter season, it's really critical, most of those events are indoors, we want to make sure we have appropriate supervision.
Any other comments from the school committee? Um, okay, I have one. Uh, how do we ensure that that person shows up when they're supposed to? Is there some way, he signs in, I mean, how do we know?
It's a scheduling between, uh, the individual and the athletic director, as they split up the responsibilities, given a, a week's worth of sporting events. Um, you know, if we were looking to capture some more concrete, you know, this is where they were, this is what they did, we can certainly get that, but it is a management issue that where they determine where that, that person is most needed. If you're during the, the winter season, obviously we have girls' basketball, boys' basketball, girls and boys' ice hockey, uh, other sports as well, you know, we try to cover as much obviously as we can.
Okay, that leads to my last question. Does that mean if we're in an away game and the Braintree kids are either behaving themselves or not behaving themselves, does that person come before us and give a report either they were behaving themselves or not? Because it's seriously, that's the talk.
I mean, typically what we are looking at is if something goes wrong in an event, you know, that's the person that we're talking to to determine who was doing something wrong, what actions we need to take to make sure it doesn't happen again, uh, and with the expectation that at that moment that individual would have intervened regardless. So, you know, typically if you go to an athletic event or other school administrators there, if it's an away game, uh, usually we work in collaboration with them when there is an issue at an away game. Uh, often there's also law enforcement at those games too. We work the circumstance to make sure that our kids are behaving as well as they can and supporting their team in the best way possible.
Okay, so we have had in the past conversations with this person where we've had these types of situations.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I believe we have to vote to approve, right?
Please.
Motion, got a second?
Seconds.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, duly noted, 5-1. Moving on to administrative updates, upcoming administrative search.
To be brief, uh, but just to make the people aware of where we are with, with certain processes, uh, as you, uh, I believe you all know, uh, we will be looking to fill positions of principal at Ross and Highlands Elementary School. Ross has been an interim principal for a number of years, uh, we, uh, acknowledge and will go through a complete search process this year. Uh, we are also, uh, looking to replace, you saw our picture of Heidi Hurley earlier, uh, we, we need to replace the director of art, uh, and so that search process will begin as well, as will a search for, uh, replacement for Jeff Rubin, who's been our special education director for a number of years. We intend to post all of these positions, uh, in or around December 15th, uh, with the belief that when we return from the New Year's, uh, that we will be in a position to begin the interview process. We will create search committees for each one of those positions, uh, and there are several of those positions that actually would require a school committee selection of the candidate, uh, and we'll walk through that process as the New Year begins.
Okay, great, you have to speak.
What about the search for Robert Highland?
The interim? Or the full replacement?
Full replacement, is it?
We got posted, yeah, I did. Yep, so that too, no, yeah, that too will get posted in or around December.
So the next committee is going to have quite a few things that are going to come before them.
Quickly as well.
Well, we'd like to think we can give them a list of these things so that they're not surprised.
Correct.
Okay, great. Surprises sometimes are that great. Although I do have surprises now, because from the school committee, we have now is awards that we're giving to the people that are leaving. I know Jen, Jen wanted me to do this Thursday, and she wasn't going to come. And I know Jen's one of those people that does not like to be recognized, and I understand that, it, it's within, you know, your character and things such as that. Um, we have a few things that we're giving myself and the mayor to our outgoing members. Jen, can't thank you enough, um, uh, you helping us with our policy, uh, uh, education subcommittee. Uh, we owe you a great debt of, uh, uh, gratitude for, uh, helping us with the debt exclusion that made, let's face it, makes self possible. Uh, I don't think there are many people that have that on their resume, but I will say that, you know, um, uh, working with you always learns something. I knew that you, when it came to horsepower, yeah, there weren't many people that, when you wanted to lift up a building and dust, dust under it, you could. Thank you very much for all that you did for the people of Braintree, you're to be commended. And I have this, um, parting gift, um, uh, this nice, um, oh, award as well as a gift package. Look at that, see, did you like the bags? Nice job, your aunt.
Hello, what you've won.
That's for you, thank you very much, love you dearly, thank you very much. Moving on to Cyril Chafe. Cyril Chafe's been with us for many years, another person that does not like to be recognized, would rather just come and go. I don't think there was ever a person that's served on the school committee that did things behind the scenes. If he saw something, he'd walk up, if it, you know, if it wasn't the physical condition of a building or something to that effect, well, hey, wait a second, this doesn't sound right to me. If there was anything as far as common sense and heart to this, uh, uh, committee, it was Cyril. Cyril, can't thank you enough, and we got you the same, well, we did, we get the same parting gift, well, at least the same bag and, and things such as that.
Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for your service to people of Braintree as well as our children. We're better because of it, and he still serves, you know, was serving on our building committee, which we believe will help with the South. And last but not least, we have one of our longest-serving members, George Kikoras. George, I love you dearly, you're a de, you're a dear friend. If there was anyone that was the brains of the operation, he'd look at me and say, Tom, no, we can't do that. It's like, yeah, well, yeah, we can, no, you can't do that. At any rate, I learned more from you, if it wasn't finance and some of the other things. You helped shepherd us through one of the more difficult times, obviously all three going through COVID and some of the positively terrible things that happened to our school system. Um, George, you'll always be a friend, and again, thank you very much for everything you did for the children of people of Braintree, love you dearly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we getting the same thing as Cyril?
Well, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, she was instrumental in finding something to do that, or I'd give everyone sneakers or something stupid like that. Um, again, for the three of you, wonderful work, um, can't thank you enough. Moving forward to Braintree High School update, oh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, certificates to, uh, get forward, please, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Jen, uh, we have a nice, uh, citation here for, for you as well, um, on behalf of the town, on behalf of myself, mayor. And, you know, I think that, um, it was said by a previous speaker how great a job you did with the debt exclusion and how hard you worked, and I start firsthand, and it was, it was such a, a great team effort with Lisa Salz and so many others, and just going to all those meetings, and, and, um, you know, you were so passionate, uh, at making sure that the job get done right and educating our students, and I've never seen anyone work so hard as you, and, uh, we're going to really miss you, because I know the amount of work that you've done and, uh, enjoyed all of our conversations, and truly want to thank you on behalf of the town, for your service to our children and to the school system of Braintree.
Thank you very much.
You will not be forgot. We'll see if I can get around my brother. Next, we have the quiet one, Cyril.
Supposedly.
He's the, he's the, he's the quiet one. Cyril, uh, definitely, uh, a statesman, and never looked for any recognition for anything, and, um, you know, I, I really got to know Cyril, um, in the last few years, and I have to tell you that, um, you know, it's been a real pleasure. I think that, you know, your common sense, um, attitude and, and really just sticking to your guns and doing what you thought was right, uh, has really benefited, uh, the children of Braintree, and, um, the fact that he can fix stuff, uh, make sure he's a better friend. But, you know, I, I enjoy our conversations and will enjoy, continue to have our conversations when you come out and visit, so, um, thank you for, uh, what you've done for us students of Braintree and, and all the hard work that you put in. Let's see, hardest, hardest one I have, I have one left. Let's see, uh, George, my brother. You know, he came in on a write-in, okay? Worked really hard, and he is, uh, you know, he is the smartest person in our family. Well, my sister will say she is, but I think it's a 50/50 split there, but, um, you know, always been a great mentor to me throughout my life, and it's really a pleasure to, you know, honor you as well for your service to the town and to the school committee, and, you know, you have contributed so much to the school committee as, as the others have as well, and, you know, it's, it makes me really proud to be able to thank you and congratulate you for your service on the school committee. And today's Ma's birthday, so, uh, let's see. I, I, I made sure that when she came in for a shot today, she got her card and gift, and George, I think sent her dinner, so, uh, we're all set.
We're covered.
But thank you all so very much, I mean, I, you know, and, and you guys got such a big paycheck, you know, for all those years of service, uh, you know, I know, thank, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Moving on, you still have the floor, you have the update on Braintree High School? Do you have that, uh, report?
Students first?
Oh.
Students first.
Um, we.
My apologies.
It's okay. Um, we have a few things we wanted to talk about tonight. Um, one thing that's happening on Thursday is something that's good, it's dancing with the staff, um, so that's a good way for like the teachers and the staff members, they dance with the dance team, and they give a little show to the students.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, as many of you know, there is a walkout, um, at Braintree High School on November 15th. This was a peaceful way, uh, for students to express their concerns regarding racial discrimination occurring in the high school. Um, students of color shared their experiences within the Braintree school system and overall called, called, uh, for change aiming at a more equal student body. Um, I attended this walkout along with, um, I think around hundreds of other students, and personally gained a better understanding of student of colors' experiences and struggles. Um, and I think it's very important for any place of education to, um, maintain an equal, um, student body, and, um, I think in order to achieve this, um, we need to have more conversations and more, um, more opportunities for people to share their own experiences, and thank you.
Okay.
And then finally, just adding on to Jack's point, um, going off of the bucko, I too had the grateful opportunity to be able to attend such a moving, um, event, um, organized by, um, fellow students at our high school. Um, I just wanted to reiterate, it was such an important cause, and I do believe that it, um, was needed, it needed to be addressed by students, and, um, I'm just wanting to be grateful for the opportunity to have gone out and been able to hear, like, first-hand remarks and understand the, um, issue that needs to be and needs changed to be brought about within the branch public schools. And then also just on another sense of normalcy as we're entering our second term in the winter season at Braintree High School, um, the music department, we are all holding the concerts for orchestra chorus and the band classes, um, next week, um, just a great way for the music department to be entering, um, just a sense of normalcy and kind of getting back to pre-COVID and being, it's our work since it started school year.
Excellent. Excellent. Any comments or questions from the school committee on the students' report?
Well, I will, Mr. Chairman, I'll just have to say that we did have a tree lighting on Saturday night and we had the show choir there and they did an incredible job. And of course, you know, Santa was running a little late, so, you know, they kept sending, they got to improvise and sing a bunch more songs, but we were extremely pleased that they just always do a great job. And, you know, we enjoyed all of the time we had with them and everybody that was there and it was a large crowd. It was very happy, so. Great group.
Excellent. Ms. Calleman?
I just wanted to follow up on the walkout. So what's planned for going forward, continuing conversation? Will there be community efforts? Will there be discussions within the school diversity groups? And how can we help you make that happen?
I think, like I said before, like the most important thing to actually create change in the high school is just to talk about it and talk about racism, talk about those difficult topics. And I think the school needs to do a better job in creating spaces for that to happen. And I know there are some diversity clubs, which are very important, but, you know, students can only do so much. So I think with administration, it needs to be a big objective to create assemblies maybe and like anything that could happen for experiences to be shared because the walkout, there was only, it wasn't the entire student body who participated. It was only a certain, certain group of that. So I think with the whole student body, with everybody participating, including teachers and staff, I think that's when change can actually happen, change can occur.
Thank you.
And just follow up on a little bit of that in terms of things that have already taken place. You know, a number of the students who helped organize that event actually sat down with the mayor and myself just to talk about some of the experiences that they have had. They actually are scheduled to speak to the high school teaching staff at the beginning of January. And we've had a number of conversations about how to effectively reach the rest of the student body to kind of share those experiences, not only at the high school but at the other schools as well. So it's a conversation that's ongoing. It's a problem that doesn't get solved overnight. You know, ideally, some of the conversations that we had with them really identified ways within a structure that we can have these conversations that are critically important without having to go through a walkout and to be able to do things within the structures that exist. So the conversations we've had with those students have been incredibly positive so far and we look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you. I've got a couple of comments on that. One, everything that really, in our country, we always have to have difficult conversations. And they come from conversations when groups share, share, share their experiences. And it's all groups. It's not just the students. It's not just administration. It's parents. It's us. It's teachers. It's everyone. It's shopkeepers. You know what? I mean, I went to school when it was predominantly a white town. There was, I think, two families, the Jameses and the Williamses. And now we're not that anymore and we're changing. And what changes with that? Well, I mean, my neighbors, I mean, I live in a neighborhood that's very diverse and we raise each other's children and they're invited in their houses and things like that. And it starts with conversations and sharing of ideas and it's, I'm disappointed that they had to protest that. But my disappointment, my willingness to listen and say, hey, wait a second, this could be, you know, a catalyst for change exceeds my disappointment. So in other words, I'm disappointed, well, it's tough. Maybe I have to listen to that and that's okay. So I look forward to more conversations and more of that coming towards us so that we can look at, how do we handle that administratively? How do we on this board? How do we as parents, you know, shall we say, look at our kids and say there's certain, certain actions that are inappropriate? They just are. And now, the good thing is, certain things that were okay, 10, 15, 20, are simply not okay anymore. So we're changing. We have more work to do. So thank you very much on that. Yes.
You know, we did have a very positive meeting and, you know, I'm there to listen. And I think that, you know, the more opportunities we have to listen and meet, more opportunities perhaps to try to make change. And so we are definitely scheduled to have some more meetings and get together and, you know, I just have to say that, you know, the strength that they had to do what they did, it's very powerful. And, you know, there's a lot of things that we're learning that we didn't know. And that's important to me as mayor, so we'll continue to have those conversations and come up with solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are now on to Braintree High School update. Mr. Mayor?
I will just say at this time, I'll give a brief update. We have, we're moving into the science lab areas and, you know, there's a number of issues there as far as water lines and things that need to be contained but shut off and things like that. So that seems to be our focus right now. And we'll continue on down that path. And I've been working with Mr. Lee and Mr. Cronin to work on how we're going to find what we've done and continue to repair whatever else we need to get done to finalize some of the jobs that we've started. So we are, you know, we're looking forward to, you know, finishing up the science area. And I think after we're done with that, we'll start to assess some other things as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right now, we have our policy and education subcommittee that's chaired by Ms. Doland.
Yes.
You have a report?
Me? There were a number of policies that were included in the packet for second reading and for approval. Was there anything you wanted to say about them, Mr. Lee?
I don't believe so. I think it was presented at our last meeting. Obviously happy to answer any questions that might have stemmed from that last.
Thought I caught a, thought I caught an eye, like. Let me in.
But otherwise.
Yeah. So if there are any, as Mr. Lee said, if there are any questions or concerns about them, we're happy to talk about them. Otherwise, as our last act is our currently.
Yes?
Excuse me? Yes.
Thank you, Jen. Just a quick question on the policy for school volunteers. I was just curious, I know some organizations require SORI as well as a CORY. Is that something that is in addition to?
SORI would be in addition to a CORY. We don't do that. We, you know, in that circumstance, if we were looking for that next level, it would actually be fingerprinting. It's a similar result. It's more of a federal look at a person's criminal background. Volunteers are always CORYed. You know, other people that come on campus, depending upon what role they'll play while on campus, we have them fingerprinted as well. So it is somewhat situated. There is a cost to having your fingerprints done that are borne by the, it would be borne by the volunteers. So we try to be judicious about when we ask for those.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there questions?
Comments or questions on these? I mean, it's pretty much boil plate stuff. Lucky, you know, your emergency closings, like we haven't had a few of those. Obviously, observance of religious holidays, I think we've added a few to show a reflection of our population. Obviously, school day is pretty straightforward stuff. Curriculum development, that's, I mean, you guys bring that to us. Nothing, obviously, adoption is, the buck stops here.
Yep.
School volunteers, we have those. We'd have a hard time offering the way we do now if we didn't have volunteers. Obviously, use of, use of our school facilities. I'd like, you know, having that, shall we say, foretold a little bit, kind of helps us going forward.
I think it puts more appropriate parameters in terms of what they can be used for.
Any comments or questions on any of these?
I'll just mention that as always, shortly after our adoption, if we so adopt them, they'll be posted on the district website for anyone to review and pass forward any questions about them as well.
Okay. So with that, do we have a motion to adopt? We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any nays? They pass. Is, we do know, we have a few things that are tabled that we will be giving forth to, I think there was two things that were tabled that we'll be giving towards the next iteration of the policy and education subcommittee. Thank you very much for your work, Jen, as always.
And we also have the school calendar.
Oh.
That is part of our packet here for policy. So this is again, our second look at this. So if there are any questions, concerns or comments, point them across the table because seriously, I could.
I'm done on this one. Wow. Pretty straightforward, people. I mean, we've seen this before. Loved it a few times. This is like the third or fourth iteration of it, so.
And just the way the calendar falls next year, it actually is a much more traditional school calendar. There aren't really a lot of surprises here. I think this is the type of calendar you'd all expect to see. Not really a lot of choices to be made in terms of the structure.
Exactly. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt said calendar.
So moved.
Second.
A motion of a second. All those in favor say aye. Any nays? Okay. It passes. Moving on to our finance and operations subcommittee that has been chaired by Mr. Kikoras. Mr. Kikoras, do you have a report for us?
Yes, sir. I think the only thing we have is the activities accounts that they looked at last time. So.
Any questions? The second reading.
Yep.
Any comments or questions? I will say this, I saw certain ones that you looked at and look, they're coming to us for money, okay? And when you see two sentences, you kind of look and say, can you, can you write me something? Is there some creative writing class that someone could put together, you know, a paragraph as to what they're trying to do? We know that they have a advisor, that's one of our staff. So maybe next year, can they kind of build it up a little bit so that we can, oh, okay, this is what they're doing.
Done.
All right, that was my only comment. With that being said, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any nays?
Aye.
Okay. 5-1. Okay. Motion passes. We have public comment. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on public comment? Okay. So I guess this is the part of the night where, this is my last meeting for all intents and purposes as chairperson. Want to say a couple of things. Yeah. Makes sense. Wow, that's tough, huh? Look, to say that the last year and a half, two years has been tough would be an understatement. There are many people to thank, everyone from the mayor's office and that group, in public health, two groups I never thought we would deal with before because of COVID and such as that. Your town was, when the state, when we asked for their guidance and got nothing from DSE and some of the other state agencies, when we looked for guidance, we got nothing. So your town was, this school system was managed by this group here and with help from the mayor's office. And your town was run by the mayor's office. Worse and we weren't picking the best choice. We're picking the choice that would do the least amount of damage. And some of the other things like oxymorons, like distance learning and things like that simply did not work for a lot of you. Although I did hear from my daughter who said, I love Wednesdays. I get to sleep in, so, well, don't tell me it didn't happen. But you look at the positives and we did get some things done. We kept ourselves afloat financially. And at one point in time, someone was, it was out that we were going to have to cut like 10%, 12% off our budget with the help from the mayor's office. Our total loss was maybe five or six people if you take into account the people that were retiring and things like that. And some people that we knew weren't going to be used. So from, oh my God, what are we going to do to, hey, wait a second, it's not great, but it's manageable. That happened with help from many people. The fact that East Junior High School is under budget, it is. The fact that we'll be opening up the bid packages on South. And I know they're going to be under budget by millions of dollars. So if we do nothing else, we know how to build schools and keep them on budget. There were other things that we did that I'm proud of. The fact that we had our children in March 15th, March 12th, I believe. We had our elementaries, our middles and our high school in when other districts weren't. This took courage and it took a great group of administrators, but it also took this group doing it too. So I look at those wonderful things. Now, so, some of us have done and obviously the people, what's that we're giving out to those that are so deserving. We have new people coming on. Ms. Heager, who brings a wealth of knowledge. Ms. Tuffy will be new as well as Mr. Lynch. I think it's important that people realize that when you sit on this school committee, you serve the people of Braintree and their children. Those are the people you serve. Nothing else. So whether you're a Democrat, whether you're a Republican, the politics is supposed to stay out in the hallway. You're supposed to come in and make the decisions that are best for the children of Braintree. And I'd like to see a new iteration do that and champion the causes so that we can do more in the next two years than we were able to do last two. With that being said, I'm setting off. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We gotta go roll call boot, last one.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor? Aye.
You're talking to me?
Yeah. Ms. Doland?
Aye.
Ms. Kikoras?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor? Get the chair outside. Signing off.